Here he comes, even as we speak. First item in the agenda is the call to meeting to order. Second item is the acceptance of the agenda.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is walk-in. Norman?
During this past budget cycle up at the State House, they initiated all kinds of new taxes. You probably know that our sales tax went from five to 6.25. What you didn't probably hear was that they added an escrow tax, an excise tax, to everybody who has satellite television. And they did it just to collect the money, for no other reason. Comcast had been lobbying for some time about how unfair it was that they paid the franchise fee and satellite TV didn't pay anything. And that probably had something to do with it. But in the last analysis, it was the fact that they got a chance to get some of that money and put it in the general fund. Now, most excise taxes, if not all of the ones that I've been able to find, have a reason for their being. You pay an excise tax on your Kyle and goes from roads and bridges. You can track the reason that that extra tax is there. But there's absolutely no reason in this bill that I can see where that money is dedicated anywhere but the general fund. And I thought I would write an amendment and give it a reason. And I thought that that money, since like the Comcast franchise fee, goes back to the cities and towns to support cable access and to support Internet access, that we would have that money come back to the cities and towns and hopefully we'd do the same thing with it and add to the dissemination of information from the town. Hopefully, maybe we can get these meetings on cable. Not, but on the Internet, not just on TV.
So what you're suggesting, if I may?
Sure.
What you're suggesting then is, you're bringing this to our attention.
Aye.
What can we do? I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think it's, you know, I think it's a win for the town.
What I'm looking for is support.
Yep.
If you would write a letter from the board to Garrett Bradley's filing it. Doesn't have a bill number just yet, but should any day now. And what we need is as much support from the local cities and towns to lobby this money, to extract it out of the general fund and bring it back to the cities and towns. That's basically where the money is generated.
How long do you think before we get a bill number on it?
I would say within days.
The reason I'm bringing it up, and I'll just open it up to the board afterwards, just to, if you would write something, all right, a letter that we could write to Bradley Cantwell, and we could send it off to, as a sample, to everyone in Plymouth County?
Sure.
And ask them to join us. Quite often, we get letters from different towns asking us to join us in a particular endeavor. You know, I'd be more than happy to do that, so. Anything from the board?
That makes sense, and I think opening it up to other towns and trying to encourage those towns to participate and to seek their representatives to support it makes sense, Norman.
If we could do that, that'd be great. If you do that, if you want to wait until a bill number comes out, fine. If you don't?
It's easier to generate a letter.
Yep.
Once it has a bill number.
Once you identify it.
Specify exactly what you're talking about.
Yep. Go for it.
Thank you, Norman.
Next is the tip for closure of Front Street for the Santa stroll.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the request of Situate Community Christmas to close Front Street to vehicular traffic from the Beaver Dam Road Jericho Road intersection to South Coastal Bank opposite Brook Street from 9:45 a.m. to approximately 10:30 a.m. for the annual Santa stroll in accordance with all conditions set by the police and fire departments.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. I'll abstain on this in past years. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a great event. What day is it?
The 5th.
I think it's the Saturday after the weekend.
Is it, that's not in the motion?
No, it's not in the motion.
So it's Saturday, December 7th?
5th.
5th. Saturday, December 5th. Great event. I think Santa comes in on a boat or something.
He does, I believe.
Absolutely.
I believe he does.
Goes down Front Street.
Tricia, this will be your first year. You've got to check it out.
Yes.
It's something to see.
Yes.
Believe me. Thank you. Next is.
It's really cold.
Seawalls. David, 181 Turner to 3 Rebecca Road. That is Cedar Point. If you'd just introduce yourself for the record, gentlemen.
David Ball, 44, Rebecca Road, President of the Cedar Point Association.
Richard Walsh, 11 Lighthouse Road, resident.
And we also have with us tonight Marie Neary, who's sitting right in back of me. She's the Vice President of the Cedar Point Association, and Steve Berlow, who's also a member. A couple of weeks ago, we sent through the board an information packet that details our concerns, and you also received a PowerPoint program showing the condition of the seawall. So tonight, I appreciate you letting us come in and discuss this a little bit further. I do have a few things that I want to pass by the board. Yesterday, I met with Al Bangert regarding this particular seawall. It was a productive meeting. We discussed the problems of funding seawall repairs. He showed me the last evaluation of seawalls that was done by Vine Associates. That was done in 2007, so it's going on almost three years at this point. Even a cursory review of that report was fairly shocking to me, frankly, because it included pictures of this particular section of seawall. And the change that has taken place between 2007 and today is stunning. There's been a tremendous amount of deterioration that's taken place since the 2007 report. And as we stated in the information packet to the Board of Selectmen recently, we had a seawall contractor give the association a ballpark estimate as to what it would take to do repairs to this particular section of seawall to buy five years of time for the town. This is the contractor that has done a lot of work in Situate and across the South Shore, so he has some experience in this kind of situation. He gave us an estimate of just under $50,000 to do the repairs that he felt would get the town five more years out of this wall before something more major would have to be done. We're not frankly looking, we're trying to find ways for the town to get this work done without spending a tremendous amount of money, because to replace this particular section of wall probably would be, my, off the top of my head, guess would be one, two million dollars. It'd be huge. I've had several discussions with Representative Jim Cantwell. The most recent was last night. I've also had several discussions with an aide to Representative Garrett Bradley. Both of them are saying that they would like the Board of Selectmen to, as soon as possible, write letters to them explaining what the problem is, not only with this particular seawall, but all seawall repair work in Situate. When I had my last discussion with Jim Cantwell last night, he felt that there may be some state money that could be available. There was at least a ray of hope. In discussions I had with him this summer, he was less hopeful than he was last night. I guess my biggest frustration with the situation is getting everyone to understand that this particular section of seawall protects 100-plus houses past that point. Every house from the south end of this particular seawall out to the White House relies on this particular section of seawall for both aggression and aggression. Obviously, if something happened to the wall, because the area is so narrow in that particular section, emergency vehicles would have no hope of getting into that area. It's a safety issue for the public. It's a heavily traveled area. I think everyone's aware that on many weekends throughout the year, there are hundreds of people that go out to the White House. All of that could be put in jeopardy if something happened. The other big concern that I have is that if something did happen to this section of wall, there's really nothing that could be done that I could imagine. There's some parts of town where if you lose a seawall, at least you can put in temporarily large stone, and you have some chance of breaking up the wave action before it gets to something else. That's not possible here. And I think, I think you know what I'm talking about after you've taken a look at that PowerPoint program. So this is what we're asking that happens at this point. I'd like to see the board write letters seeking state support for funding their share. They're supposed to be funding their share of seawall construction repairs, and they have not been. I'd like that letter to go out to Representative Cantwell, Bradley, and Senator Helen. I would also hope that the Board of Selectmen could, as a group, go onsite to that seawall immediately as soon as possible, so that you can visually see what's taking place. Couple of the members of board who's luckily have been out there in the past few months, but I think even since they are out there, they'd see further deterioration. And lastly, having my discussion with Al yesterday, my concern is that if the new seawall evaluation is not done until late next spring, then it's going to be another year before anything much happens. He indicated to me that he thought that the update of the seawall inspections would not be an extreme cost for the town. And that needs to be done. It's over two years old now. What we'd like to see happen is to have the structural engineers that do this evaluation tell us if our concern is valid, that if this wall were to fail, it's going to be a disaster. And then if that is the case, we would hope that the Board of Selectmen would include some repair costs for this particular section of seawall in the capital budget for annual meeting coming up next.
Okay, I have handed out, thanks David, I handed out, I was going to bring this up under other business at the end of the night, but this is certainly more apropos now. A presentation or suggestion prepared by a Situate resident, Jim Bailey, which I think you're familiar with, David.
I spoke to him less than an hour ago.
This is, did you, this is more long-term, ongoing than what you're talking about, but I gave this to the board, I gave it to Al, I gave it to Tricia. I asked Al to look it over. He gave a cursory look to it prior to the meeting and said it looked good. I asked him to go through it and edit it wherever he felt it was necessary and get back to us with his thoughts. Long-range, okay, ongoing, not necessarily dealing with your particular problem right now, but I just wanted to get down to the table. As far as your situation is concerned, and I'll open it up to the board in a second, I don't think we'll have any problem at all writing letters to the representatives. And I'll leave it at that. I just hope the letters have some effect. Sometimes we write these letters and.
Yeah, we're well aware of that. I mean, writing letters is maybe the easy part.
Yep.
But I think if the town keeps putting the pressure on.
Fine, agreed.
I mean, the stimulus money that doesn't seem to be being spent, there's a whole, there's a whole lot of issues on the state level. My understanding of the Situate problem is that the state has not come through with the money that really they're supposed to for their share of the repairs that were approved by FEMA. So it's holding everything up.
Yeah, money is certainly a problem. Less than a month ago, I think Al came to us. Our town meeting passed funding for three or four places or half dozen places along the coast, seawall repair. And we couldn't even go forward with it because there was no money. You know, we had appropriated our money, but the state didn't give through their share. So that's the problem. That's why I think, you know, the one thing to say, well, you know, we'll get it done, or represent say, we'll get it done. But the fact of the matter is, we're still waiting on money that.
I think the other, the other very important thing is that the town doesn't update on that seawall evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
I would hate to see that not happen until next May or June. Then it's too late, because then you have no clue as to what the needs are, like this one. And then it's another year away.
Yep. You've talked to Al about it.
I did talk to Al about it. He didn't give me a dollar amount, but he indicated to me that it wouldn't be a huge cost.
Wood, open up, Sean.
I was just going to say, is Jim Cantwell seen? Does he know how this situation is unique compared to other seawalls?
He will by tomorrow, because that was put in the mail to him today. Garrett Bradley received it yesterday. It's going out to Bob Helen tomorrow.
Just wondering, and they're all important, but this one.
And Jim, I know I've had, I've had probably more discussions with Jim Cantwell than the other two. I've been explaining to him as best I could and tried to have him visualize the area and the problem of that narrow section of road and then the house, the number of houses past that one. I think he's familiar enough with the area to know it, but he'll see it on that PowerPoint program.
Perfect. Good. That was my thought.
Yeah, no, Dave, thanks for coming, Richard, and also Steve. I know we've talked in the past. I've visited it. I'll be more than happy to go back down again. As I said to you before, is that obviously relying on state funds is not necessarily the panacea here, because obviously, if they can't contribute for the wall further down, I don't have, I'm not going to hold my breath expecting it in the future, which brings the issue to, then how do we go forward and fund not just this wall, but other walls in town that have equal ratings, if not worse, ratings? And I think, you know, I was under the impression initially that this report was from the forshore protection was actually going to happen sooner, not necessarily into the spring. So I, I hope that we could do that, because I think it's important, clearly, to see the deterioration of the walls as they presently stand. I've seen the report. It's from 2007. It's now two years later. I know in the past, they do it every two to three years. But regardless, if there's a storm, then obviously, if we have the report done sooner, I would think next year we're going to be able to identify it, that storm-related. Maybe we can get FEMA funding, so on and so forth. I think you're absolutely right. This is kind of unique by comparison to other areas in town, because in the event that this is breached, then you've got an island and then the ability to try to get over. So there's clearly a health and safety issue. I think the issue, at least from my perspective, has always been, not just for this one, but how do we go forward and fund it? And I think if it's a, if it's an under $50,000 fix, great. The concern I have is that we'd be putting a Band-Aid over really an issue that the wall's really compromised and it really needs the $200,000 or a, or God forbid, but something even larger, not just for this stretch, but up and down further. So I think it's imperative that we have that evaluation of that wall, because before we commit any funds, if we have any funds to it, I'd like to make sure that the wall, the integrity of the wall is either compromised or it's solidified, and therefore, we should be able to go forward and take one of the two remedies. If it turns into a large-term issue, cost-wise, then I think we have to address that issue and try to determine, how do we, how does the town look at that in the long term? You know, not just this area, but again, we could deal with mine it, we can deal with the cliffs, we can deal with Hummer Rock. So I just, I think that's important. But I, I think we should have an evaluation. I'd like, if the board, if we could, if there's any way we can encourage it to happen sooner than later, I think that would be of paramount concern.
Thank you. Tony?
Al, do you know when the evaluation is planned? How much it costs? And your input on doing it quicker?
We haven't received the proposal back from our expert Vine Associates yet. Depending upon how much that is, we may need to go out for requesting for proposals. The net of it is, we're targeting to do the evaluation in the late winter, early spring, before town meeting. Time frame, March, April. March.
And how much does it cost about?
Probably five to $9,000.
And it's funded through your budget, TBW? Yeah, because I saw, I looked at the report. I guess, Dave, what you're suggesting is that in the two years since this report has been last done, that this wall has deteriorated more than some of the others. Because in the ranking system now, this is in the lowest category.
That's correct.
So, and you think that doing it March, April is going to be too?
It's too late.
Too late? Because of winter storms?
Town meeting is coming up in April.
So you couldn't get it funded?
There's nothing that you can do. So you're looking at another year. And that's, that's what we're so very concerned about. And again, if this wall were to fail, it's similar to having something bad happen to the Edward Foster Road Bridge. What are you going to do? There's nothing really you can do, once that happens.
Right. Al, did you?
Yeah, great. I think Al.
Al, did you have something?
I was just going to say that having the survey doesn't create the money. I can tell you right now, we have about $5 million worth of work to do on seawalls in Situate, based upon the survey that was done in July of '07. And escalating that for probably additional, some additional damages and some additional costs, that at that time, they were looking at three, three and a half million dollars worth of airwork, beating another 21 miles of seawall. Say that's $5 million now. I think there's a global problem that needs to be tackled. Certainly, this is an important area for these residents and for this part of town. There are other areas that are of similar importance. I think the opportunity to tackle the global problem is one to be taken on. And whether this survey is done in December or February won't change what we need to do for town meeting.
So the three, I mean, obviously, funding is the issue. State, federal money is one option, which is less likely. You go through capital planning and put it on, on the list, as I'm sure, I hope you would do that anyways. Another option would be a betterment to the area to fix that and like a sewer in the area, to have the, some group of residents pay for that repair. And then the other one that Al mentioned was to talk about some sort of override on a mass, on a big, big scale, where we were going to get five or six million dollars to repair all the seawalls. So am I missing, those seem to be the only options available to fund this.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, the cost, the cost of the evaluation is fairly well-known, five to $9,000. In my mind, the sooner that is done, the sooner the town has some more definitive answers than you have now. It's going to be spent in this budget cycle anyway. So why wait until April if it can be done in January or late December?
You're talking about the survey?
I'm talking about the evaluation.
Right.
The sooner the town has a better handle on, for this particular wall, is what we're mostly talking about. If the evaluation were to find that, yes, this wall is in danger of collapse, or it's going to happen within the next couple of years, most likely, that's a bad thing. And something can be done with that wall within the, within probably a year's period of time that would not be extremely costly. But if it, if it were to fail or breach, you've got a major, major expense and no way to solve it quickly.
I guess my only point is, we're not, we're not sitting here blind. We did just get a report a year and a half ago. So, and it is on the list, right? I mean, that, that is there. So we're.
It's, it's two years. It was, I don't know, I don't know what month of 2007 it's done. My guess is the spring of 2007.
July.
July. So it's over two years. It's two and a half years old at this point. And what's shocking to the neighborhood is the change that's taken. And that's why I'm urging the board to take, even, even for those members that have seen it in June, to take another look at it now.
Quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've spoken with Dave, and as John Dennehy said, you know, I've been on the site too, and I think the whole board is very sympathetic to the situation. And I certainly support, one, sending a letter to Beacon Hill and doing anything we can do to help our friends up there expedite this or try to help get state support for seawall maintenance and repair. I'm not holding my breath on that. I'm also not holding my breath on, I don't think $41,000 or whatever that figure is, is going to, even as a Band-Aid, is necessarily going to help on the medium term. I do support if we can move the survey as soon as possible, not only for the reasons that Dave Ball articulated, but also because, I think, following up on what Tony was saying here, this is a large-scale problem, and I would like to see a very in-depth discussion about these big-scale issues that we have and big-scale options that we have, the betterments, neighborhood by neighborhood, or the town-wide override. One can argue that it really should be a betterment, because it just immediately services those people on the cliffs or in this particular neighborhood or mine it or whatever. One could also argue for a town-wide override, because so many people use all the beaches, so many people go to the White House, so many people go everywhere. And I think reasonable people can have very different ideas about how to move forward on this, and I think it's going to be a big item. And I'd like to see that fully, fully vetted before town meeting. And so I think if we have this survey done as soon as possible, it'll help set us up for that. Frankly, even though I completely support repairing that wall as soon as possible, and I think getting the survey will help that as well, I'm most interested in the survey for addressing the town-wide global problem. And then I think that'll come.
There's a lot of reasons to do it.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm concerned if it's not to reduce.
Tony?
Well, I was just going to ask, Al, do you think over the next week or so you could look in to see what the possibility would be to, to move that date up? And what the ramifications of that could be?
We're also fortunate that the new town engineer, Kevin Cafferty, has built seawalls as part of his previous life, major seawalls, and has advised towards these things. We were just discussing it, and in order to understand more about any seawall, you need to more or less take the seawall apart to see what's required to fix it.
Yes.
It's not just a matter of taking a look at it. It's drilling into it to see what the core looks like. However, we'll get an early answer before your next meeting can be able to tell you when we can schedule, whether we can afford to, and when we can schedule what resources we might need to do the evaluation.
They certainly corrode awfully fast. I mean, once they get to a certain point, boom, they just kind of go past that tipping point. And that's exactly what's happened down on this, on this particular seawall.
I urge the board and Al, I know, and Tricia to read this pamphlet proposal, call it what you want, that was handed out on the Seawall Committee, that addresses, it attempts to address what we've all been talking about, the larger scale, the big problem, federal grants. And my intention would be, after it's looked over by town administrator and Al and Kevin, to possibly ask the board to form a committee, this committee, to do just that, look at the overall seawall situation, possible federal funding more than state funding, that type of thing. So. John?
Just three brief points. One is, I, you know, Al, I think it raises a salient point, which is, you know, being able to get into the core of these structures. In particular, I know that one's, that wall's from like 19, early 1900s. And so that's why I think it's imperative to see what the integrity of that seawall is as it stands. And I think, as you say, thanks for trying to do it sooner, because reality is, if we're able to put a seawall committee together, that information's paramount and important for the committee to evaluate. And being able to core through not just this area, but I'm sure there are other ones, and I don't think that's a part of their, the initial evaluation, but to some degree, I think that's kind of imperative, certainly in this stretch, given the age of the wall and any other areas in town that have that age. I think it's imperative that we, we as a town, at least try to get into the core to determine the integrity of those other areas. Thank you, gentlemen.
John?
Just, Kevin, do you think you have the experience to do this so we wouldn't have to go out? Hate to put you on the spot. You know, but, well, I was wondering if you had done that with, you know, with MOD or anything like that?
Not a complete evaluation. I think, I mean, everything, it'd be better to have a company like Vine come up and do the evaluation. That particular wall's a little tricky, because it's an old wall
That particular wall's a little tricky, because it's an old wall, and somebody patched it up maybe 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and it looks nice from the outside, but without really pouring into the sun, and having the equipment to do that, you don't know what was on the side, if the virus rotted, if the cement is...
There isn't any riprap in front of it?
No, it's just a concrete wall, so it's deceiving. The front looks nice, you know, the backside, it's in rough shape.
What we'll do, David, immediately, I guess, we'll be sending off letters to the representatives of the senator, telling them of the seriousness of this particular situation, and to see if there's any immediate money that can be sent our way to deal with it.
I'm not sure, then they'll continue to hear from us as well.
I'm sure they will. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Anything from the, sir? If you would identify yourself.
Steve Barroso, 183 Burner Road. Kevin and Al made a good point about not only visually looking at the seawall, but getting inside to see what's wrong with it. I did take some sections of the concrete to some reputable testing labs, and they all agree, without getting into a formal report, which would have generated a cost to us, they're friends of mine in the industry, but they all came back with no alkalized silvery activity.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, what's happening is that wall is failing from the inside out. There's no bond left between the aggregate and the cement base, and it's blowing off the gunite that they did 10 years ago. It's that interior of that seawall is expanding, and it's blowing that three inches of gunite that was put in there. So, I brought some to John and showed him, and you can break the aggregate with your hands, that's how bad it is, and there's just no bond left. And every time it takes impact, it's just crumbling, so.
Yeah.
It's just a bit long before it comes to the ground. But I can share some of that information with you.
If you would, that'd be great with Kevin or Al, that'd be great. Thank you. Anything else from the floor? Once again, David, we can write the letter off, you would like it, if you would like to draft a letter for us to sign, we'd be happy to do that. That way, you'd cover all the points that we might miss if I tried to draft it myself. And if you could get it to Kim, and Kim would put it in front of us, and we could sign it. That'd make it a lot easier, I think, and a lot more effective, and, if I say, Kevin.
And the other thing I'd like, I think it's important, if we get the board down and take a look at the wall.
Well, I think we'll all, we've all been down there at different times, I think, but we're more than happy to get down again.
I think it'd be good to have everybody there at the same time.
Yep.
Maybe if you can just let me know when that's good for everybody. And then, the other thing that I'm hoping that we can do is get that evaluation done as soon as possible.
We're going to try to do all that. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Tony?
I was just going to say, Trish can probably tell you when capital planning needs their stuff in by, or Eric, should he email Eric?
No, it's actually in your packet.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, November 27th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Moving along.
Seawall is a base.
What's that?
Tell you later.
Item number five is a discussion and a possible vote on liquor license violation policy. Tony Vignani's been taking the lead on this whole issue for a while now, and he's been trying to work out a sensible program for us. So, I'm going to turn it over to Tony to make his comments, and let the discussion go where it may.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. This all was kind of prompted from, what, over the last six months, we've had a couple of instances where we had to vote on liquor license violations. I've spoken with the chief about it a number of times, and I decided that I was going to look into and do a little bit of research and see what other towns do, but my goal was to try and get some sort of, well, it's actually two-tiered, get some sort of structure so that there's more of an objective measure when we have a violation, and also get a better system in place in terms of the testing that we do. And I've learned from our surrounding communities, and actually across the state, what some of them do, and then in talking to the chief, in terms of what funds are available and how often we do it now, but more along the lines, my goal would be to get stricter enforcement and stricter penalties in place, so that, you know, Situate doesn't have the violations that we've had in the past, in summary. I'll tell you just a little bit, I mean, what we have now is a draft guideline, which in our prior discussions wasn't even really that. You know, it didn't even seem like it had any teeth at all, and it was drafted about five years ago, so it seems like it's time to have it revisited. Let me start with my second point first, and Detective Stewart can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think now we do our inspections, we did it once every two years? Is that about right? When we did it last year, we had done it two years before that? What's the frequency of our current sting operations?
Compliance checks?
Yes.
It's according to funding.
Right.
We had a grant this year. If that's available next year, on a yearly basis. If it's not, then it's up to the department to fund it.
And there was a $5,000 grant, is that? I know, all of it didn't go to that, but there was...
No, it was less than that. It was the accident, underage alcohol, it wasn't just compliance.
Right.
Gathering.
Much as it cost.
The problem with the grant was that the duration didn't exactly fit when our problems already started up about this time. We had more problems in the summertime, you know.
Right.
It actually went into...
Question.
Off the top of my head, I think it was around $2,500.
Right. And...
Just a quick question, are compliance checks built into your annual budget, or are they entirely dependent on grants?
No, they're not terribly expensive.
Okay, all right. Great, thanks.
I guess what I would like to suggest is that we up it, and we do it at least two a year, you know, during the times of years that the police force thinks it's going to be most applicable. Obviously, the summer is one of the times. And then also, you know, I don't know how we'd get that in the budget, but we'd have to get some sort of costing estimates to see how much it would cost to run the operation. It seems pretty straightforward, although you have to have police force going with whoever the operative is, but I think it gets done over the course of one or two nights usually. So, that would, that number would be of interest, and I'm sure to Trish it too, and take, in terms of the budget itself. The second part of the discussion is in terms of the violation and the penalties that arise from it. Currently, our guidelines say, for instance, for sale to minors with an ID, that the first offense is a one-day violation, the second offense is a five-day violation, the third offense is a 30-day violation, and the fourth offense is the license is revoked. When comparing that to some of the other towns, this is actually rather strict, although we don't really follow it, so it really doesn't have any real merit. But, for instance, the town of Norwell, the first violation is up to six days, second violation up to 12 days, and the third violation is revoked. The town of Stock Southbridge, seven days, up to seven days for first violation, up to 30 days for a second violation, it's revoked on the third violation. Westfield, three days, up to three days for the first, three to six for the second, six to 12 for the third, revoked at the fourth. Drakeett was a 30-day violation, 30 days for the first violation. Some other ones were warnings for the first. Andover was a warning for the first violation, one to 14 for the second, and one to 30 for the third. So, I guess, I'd like to err on the side of being stricter than, more lenient. What I also did is I went back to the ABCC website, A-B-C-C website, and I looked at this year's, they have all the hearings and all the conclusions from them, and I looked at about 50 of them, and, you know, that's what we're banging our head up against. If you go to the ABCC, they tend to be more lenient than the towns do in their penalties. But, overall, it seemed like their violations were between a warning and a three-day suspension for a first one. A lot of times, as John has suggested in the past, they do it in abeyance, the ABCC does, and then the second one seemed to go up to about a seven-day limit, where they also inflict any of the abeyances that they've held in the past. So, that seemed to be the guidelines for them, and then the guidelines for some of the other surrounding towns. What I'd like to do is take our guidelines and make them, whatever we think the proper violation would be, and follow them, and make them as strict as possible, so that we don't have any other occurrences. One thing I'd like to note is that Village Market, since they came before us, has taken very positive steps. There's many, many signs all over the store now that say, "You're not going to be served if you don't have a license." So, I think that in the case with them, you know, that the penalty that they got enforced really provoked change, and that's what we want to see. You know, we just want to continue to have all these sting operations come back with no violations, and, you know, obviously not have minors being served.
Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, I think taking those two things in reverse order, as Tony just presented them, I too would like to see this built into the budgets, because no matter how small, it still has some cost, and twice a year seems reasonable, and, you know, move it around, obviously, each year, so they don't know, oh yeah, third week in April, here we go. But, you know, doing like that would be really, really good. And I think that would really help prevent a lot of some of the stuff we've seen. And I'm just going to offer my full support behind what Tony's suggesting here, and, you know, I guess I'd say, maybe you should make some recommendations, or something like that at some future point, but I think two things is, let's get, one thing I liked about, one thing I don't like about this advisory policy now is, there's no room for slack, because I can see variation in, you know, sale to minors without ID, first offense, it says five days here, for example, and I could see where I could see a first offense would be maybe six days, and I could also see a first offense might be five days with two held in abeyance or something. So I'd like to see some range. I know some of the other towns, as you just said, have some ranges in there, so if you're putting together some guidelines for us to look at, I'd like to see some slight flexibility, not allowing us to go too lenient, though. So I think this would be great, and like you, I'd like to, if we err, I'd like to, or if we have a range, I'd like to range on the side of sternness.
If I just make, there are a few things that I meant to say. A few other things that I noticed in looking at other towns is, one of them, they do do it over a period of time, so a lot of them have a certain number of violations within a certain number of years. So it's not this open-ended thing. It's, if you have three violations within three years, then it, you know, you kind of get your slate clean after a certain period of time.
Yeah.
Another one that they do is they only enforce the penalties on the weekends. So if you get a six-day suspension, it's three weekends. Another thing that quite a few towns do is they do it per case, per individual. So if you serve six minors in one group, it counts as six violations, the penalty would be times six, and it would be served, again, the penalties were all served on the weekends, so it could be, you know, quite a big detriment if there were six people with a two-day penalty, it could be, you know, two or three months worth of penalty. So, those are some things that you can incorporate into it. I'm not prepared right now to say, this is what I suggest, this is, you know, what I will do is pull that together, and I'd like to talk to the police department too, and see how they feel about it, but...
I think it's, before we ask you to do that, let me just go to this side, and...
Sure. No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually going to, Tony first, thank you. I've looked through all of them, and you've raised a lot of the points that I've highlighted, because I'm thinking to myself, a lot of these towns, for various reasons, have come up with certain suggestions to suit their needs, which brings me back to, we really don't have any forms of regulations concerning this. And I know that the chief and lieutenant have put together the last call, but I mean, the reality, just on a thing that we have here, but these are really good regulations from various towns, that I think the town needs to codify and put into some form of regulations. And this draft policy was just a...
Just that.
It's a draft. It really is not a guideline that the board has implemented. And I think going forward, it's important for the town, given the history of this town and the situation with some of the alcohol and some of the abuses, that we should put something in writing, and which is going to be my suggestion, be, should we put a little subcommittee together? I'll be happy to partake on it, because I think there's a lot of information here that I think would be very beneficial to the town of Situate. For example, you'd mentioned about the minors, so if somebody is, there's one incident, then for each incident, if there's 10 minors, then you've got 10 incidences here. And you'd mentioned about maybe a grace period after so many months, whether it's 12 months, 24 months, or 36 months, and yet, one of them had something to the effect that, in the event that there were prior infractions with the prior holder of this, I think that's a factor that should be factored into a decision by the board, not saying that that should be the, you know, that we should have a hard and fast rule. I think flexibility of the board's important, but I think it's important, right now, we don't have any guidelines, and we don't have any policy, so I think we should do just that. I think we should propose, you know, disciplinary penalties, we should propose, you know, whether it's the last call, and how, last call being, you know, what are the, what's the guidelines for a facility, or a bar, or restaurant, to say, this is the last time you're going to have any more drinks, clear the tables, patrons go out, end of story, place is shut down. There may be a difference, though, whether it's a function hall as compared to a restaurant or a bar, and I think, you know, the various towns have gone through this and handled them differently, and I think we've got the benefit of all these towns to maybe go through it, and maybe get better regulations by comparison. So, that would be my suggestion. I think you've done a great job putting this together, because frankly, I mean, it's pretty comprehensive, all these things, and the violations and the infractions vary from town to town. So I think, I think we should, something should be proposed, we should take a look at it, and then we should adopt it.
John?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I've heard it three times now, and I think flexibility is important. When I was reading over, I think Norwell said up to so many days, Rick touched on it, and John just did as well. Before I would vote any penalties, you know, in way of violations, I'd just like to ask some of the, you know, Mike and Brian, but also some of the, invite the license holders in. It's an area that I'm not an expert at. I was talking to Joe about it earlier, someone presents a fake ID and stuff. You know, I mean, there are, 20 years ago, it was a lot easier to duplicate, you know, to alter an ID, but I was just thinking of a couple of weeks ago, when I went into a store and a girl, a local merchant took my license and scanned it and showed me, you know, so things have come along so fast, and I just think, I'd like to hear from some of the license holders to bring me up, educate me more, before I can make a, you know, a good decision. But... Just one last point on that, Sean, is, what I'd like to make sure is that we can, when you're doing a sting operation, it's pretty clear-cut. You know, it's much more objective and less subjectivity in it, so a person went in, they got served, they didn't get served, and that's where this penalty base can be pretty strict.
Okay.
You know, in terms of whether there's, you know, whether they were served or they weren't served, we've heard some of those also, then it gets a little bit vaguer.
Right.
But the town of Norwell has, you know, two or three different sets of regulations, depending on the instance.
Right.
Depending on the establishment, too, whether it's a pouring establishment or retail establishment. So it can be, you know, you can make it tighter on some situations, and, you know, more flexible in other situations.
Great.
I think, Tony, if you'd be, I think what we're hearing is, if you'd be willing to do even more work on this, and come up with a suggested code or violation policy, dealing with everything we've talked about, and you could either ask for help from the board, or, you said visit with the chief, whatever you want to do, get back to us.
Sure.
When you're completed, maybe give it to the board prior to that, so we could have a chance to look at it, so we wouldn't be looking at it for the first time.
Well, John, if you're interested...
I am.
And I think maybe what we should do is have an open meeting, too, you know, maybe meet in the sub-meeting beforehand to get data together with the police department, and then have an open meeting where merchants could come and give their input as well, and then present it after this. Does that sound like a...
Great idea, as a matter of fact. I think, you know, just to touch on the seriousness of this, and it's been, the phrase has been overused, but, I mean, there's an epidemic out there of abuse of alcohol and abuse of drugs, and if anyone thinks we're making much to do about nothing, they couldn't be more mistaken, because there is a deed, and I've heard Detective Stewart mention this years ago, it's an epidemic, and we better, we better deal with it, so, that's what we'll do. If it's all right with you, Tony, thank you for taking that upon yourself, believe you.
Great.
And thanks for the police chief to get all, a lot of this data together for us.
Thank you all.
Next is a vote for the turbine lease and power agreement from Al.
I'll call it.
There's been a change on this, just on the name, I believe, Al, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. Gentlemen, I'm here tonight to recommend to the board of selectmen that you sign a lease and a power purchase agreement with Situate Wind LLC, which is a special purpose affiliate of Salea Energy of Woburn. And Salea in turn is affiliated with Loomis Construction, a large and prominent construction firm on the North Shore. These are... These agreements that we have arrived at with them frame the economic arrangements whereby the energy company Solea constructs, owns, and operates a wind turbine on town property for the sole purpose of providing reduced-cost electrical energy to us as the town. The savings in town over the 15-year life of these agreements will, using very conservative calculations about what the savings would be, will save the town $4.5 million over the 15 years, roughly $250,000 per year on average. The background of this is in December last year, the Renewable Energy Committee, led by Paul Reedy, completed their extremely exhaustive study of wind energy opportunities, and they recommended to the town through you that the town leased this piece of property next to the sewer plant to an energy company for them to fund and pay for construction of a wind turbine. At the town meeting in April, the vote was made to lease the property for up to 25 years for this purpose. Following that, then we sent out a request for proposals, received very, three, three very good proposals came in from the energy industry. And in late June, that same energy committee studied those proposals, interviewed all the applicants, and recommended to you that we begin working with Solea Energy of Woburn to come to agreements on the arrangements. The town administrator in June then hired the attorney firm Wilmer Hale, Wilmer Hale of Boston. They have a very large energy industry practice. They're involved in the energy industry and are recognized experts in this area. We engaged them to help us negotiate a suitable lease and a power purchase agreement because this will be one of the first of a kind. And will be setting really the tone for other communities, perhaps in Massachusetts, who use town land for a private firm to build a turbine to provide power to the town. The agreement with Solea, which we've arrived at, is for them to design, pay for, construct, own, maintain, and operate a 1.5-megawatt wind turbine on our site right next to the sewer plant. And assuming that they obtain all the required permits, which includes federal aviation, federal communications, the planning board, and the Department of Public Utilities, assuming that they, after they obtain all those permits, which will be a very public process involving, again, opportunity for residents to participate, the turbine, we project will be operational within 20 to 24 months. This puts us into about this time in the year 2011, or perhaps in the summer of 2011, so that we can begin seeing the benefit of that power saving in the fiscal year 2012. So we shouldn't budget for it yet, thank you. We receive the right to buy all of the energy produced at a very specific fixed rate. The initial rate is 8.9 cents per kilowatt hour. Currently, energy is running around 17 cents per kilowatt hour. So initially, we will see a considerable savings. And the rate that their price increases, it only goes from 8.9 cents to 10.9 cents over 15 years, which is far below any projections of inflation, particularly in the energy area. The contracts provide us with significant protections on the downside. We get, we've worked into your clauses for damages if there's a late startup, in other words, payments to us if they are late in starting, payments to us if their output falls below a certain level, which they will guarantee. There's a penalties in there for any early termination or any demolition fees will be set aside in case the turbine were to not be productive or the company, their company were to fail, then there are rights that we have to step in and take over. We have rights of first refusal. All of the liability insurance elements that the town requires are written into the contract. And then lastly, there are two possible five-year extensions of the contract with mutual agreement. In 15 years, if they and we agree that they want to go forward for another five years, there'll be another contract negotiation determined on what basis we would go forward. Excuse me. The savings in energy based on today's power cost, as I said, is around $275,000. As our town is currently structured, about half of that savings would be for the sewer enterprise. The other half would be then applied to other town accounts. We don't have to decide on that today. That can be determined by, over the course of the next 15, 18 months, exactly where we want the credits to accrue. And we may have to do some, make some changes with some of our structures so that we can have even more flexibility in applying those savings more broadly. So I would suggest that you would move to vote to accept these agreements, and then we'll do, have signing over the course of the next week or so.
Thank you, Al, very, very much. And thank you to Paul and the entire Energy Committee for the work. As Al said, that they've done over the past probably two years.
Really?
Extremely intensive and haven't missed, haven't missed much, I'll tell you. They've covered all the bases, and we would publicly thank them now for that work. Rick Murray?
Yeah, just picking up on that theme. I know the answer to this, Al, but I wanted to kind of get this into the record because you just told it to me. How much do you estimate the town has spent on this so far?
Well, I mean, if you don't count the thousands of hours of blood, sweat, and tears put into this by the Renewable Energy Committee. Our total cost now is running around $9,000 in attorney fees helping to organize these agreements. And the return on that $9,000 will be 15 years' worth of energy at savings of a quarter of a million dollars a year.
Yeah. That's what you call a good rate of return. And it goes to Paul and everybody else here. Al, your group as well, for doing that. Just a couple of other points. Just to reiterate, Al pointed out, this is a public process, and it has been very, very public so far, with the Renewable Energy Committee having lots and lots of meetings to get us to this point. You've had several meetings, and it's going to continue to be public process through all the planning board and so on and so forth. Al's also spoken with Tim Lopes of Go Green, and has kept him informed, and this lease is completely consistent with what Tim's lease is in terms of how Tim's going to handle the construction time and all that. And so that's very important because that's something else that happened on Al's watch during DPW, which has helped turn around the whole transfer station finances, as you recall on that. So I'm very pleased to see that. And then just as a, as a final two points. When they decide to build these things, after they get through all the permitting, they go up really, really fast. So I just urge people to not feel like, because they don't see something tangible, that nothing's going on. Right outside my office down in Woods Hall, there's a, there's one that they built in three and a half weeks from start to finish. And the reason is that is because the crane, which has to be, of course, taller than these things, which are quite tall themselves, the crane costs are really, really expensive. So the construction people have very high motivation to build these things like that. So once it's all permitted and through, it's just going to just fly right on up. And I'd just like to close is, let's get more of these, too. Once we get this done and really on the way. It takes a long time to get the year-long anemometer studies and so on. I'd love to see more of these in Situate, particularly at that rate of return. $250,000 a year for 15 years, and so far, in addition to the person hours, but $10,000 or so of legal fees. That's great. Let's get more of these things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Tony?
Yeah, just a couple of things. You mentioned the readings there. I'd like to thank Myron Bolick, who checked it daily and made sure that it was secure and that the readings were accurate for months upon months. Great write-up here, Al. Just two, one question and one, reiterate one point. On the five-year extension, it says mutual agreed upon. Does that mean we both have an out, or is that how it's phrased?
Yes.
If it's not working after that time period, we can get out or they...
Yes, and there could be several different routes. One could be, we come to an agreement and we want to buy the energy from them at a price. If we decide we don't want to buy the energy at that price, then they have the right to go out to the marketplace and see what they can sell it for. And then we still have the right to decide that if they get, if the deal is better than what we wanted or we change our mind, we can buy it at that point. So we have first rights of refusal on any sold energy. And if they sell the energy outright, then we get a share of the profits they make while selling that energy outright.
And if wind power becomes obsolete, then they have to pay to bring it down?
Yeah, and they have, they have a lot of nuts in the game as well, a lot of, as a squirrel would, you know. They're, there's a lot of incentive for them to have a productive piece of equipment because remember, we've got our $10,000 on the line, they've probably got their $4 million on the line.
Right. The only other thing, just to reiterate, that there are a large amount of savings that are becoming this, and I know that you and Trish are looking into what the uses of that money could be. Not a discussion for now, but that, you know, that money could be used to fund several of the projects or operations in the town. So what hasn't been decided is to where that money has to be spent, but that'll be looked at over the next 20 months, I think is what you said.
Thanks, Tony. John?
Just briefly, Al, and sorry to put you on the spot. What's the useful life of one of these windmills?
25, 30 years.
Okay. Last question I have. Kevin, have you ever built one of these, too?
I was just getting off the phone two days ago with the town engineer, Palmit, and we were talking about it, and he was telling me about the 300-ton crane they had setting it off to blow. We're having some problems bringing the power in, how they're connecting into the grid system out there, but I got the whole lowdown on that.
John, I think that's a yes.
John?
Just one question on the, one of your details. So, second one, payment if the output fails below a guaranteed amount. So they are that confident that they're going to get enough wind?
They will guarantee us 3 million kilowatt hours a year, and that's the basis that I've made the analysis on. If 3 million kilowatt hours a year would be, if you would take this turbine, if you would spin it every day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. It would produce 14 million kilowatt hours. Okay? The calculation we're using is 3 million kilowatt hours, which is 22% of max output. And they're willing to say, to stand behind that they can produce that much energy as a floor. If in the course of a year, they don't produce that much energy, even because the wind's not blowing, then we're covered. They would prefer not to. They would prefer to make more than the 3 million kilowatt hours, and we would prefer that they do that, too. Our load is greater than that. We could stand several of these $3 million kilowatt-hour projects.
And it's, I think I know the answer to it. So in lieu of any rental money, we just get a reduced rate, energy rate?
Yes.
That's it?
We chose to put everything into the energy rate as opposed to putting it into the lease. If we put it into the lease, then we'd have a higher energy rate.
Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly. Right. It's cleaner this way. I think that was it. Thank you. Before I, before I ask for a motion, I just want to, and John will probably appreciate this, I just wouldn't want to see this occasion go by without mentioning an individual who probably, believe it or not, eight to 10 years ago, every time you saw Paul O'Brien, whether it be at church, at village market, at the landfill, no matter where it was, long before any of us were even thinking about it. In fact, it was Don Quixote-type thinking, actually, on his part, at least in many of our eyes. Paul has since passed away, unfortunately, but I just didn't want to let this occasion go by without mentioning him and mentioning the hard work that he did a long time ago getting this seed planted in many of our minds, even when we didn't know what he was talking about. I just want to...
That is so true.
I just make note of that, that's all. Motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen votes to accept the lease and power purchase agreement with Situate Wind LLC for a 15-year period with two possible extensions of five years based upon mutual agreement by both parties.
Second.
Further discussions from the board, from the floor. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Kevin.
Moving right along. Number seven is the motion to ratify the appointment of a field coordinator. And we'll take a motion on that. Do we need it? Don't Trish just ask that be brought to our attention because it's a new, a new appointment?
Do you want to read the memo?
Read the memo.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Charter of Situate, this is from the town administrator, by the way, I'm informing the board that I have appointed Paul Sherry of Situate to the new position of field coordinator for the rec. department.
Done. Congratulations, Paul. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward and offering your time. We appreciate that.
Here you go, Paul. I just want to, could I just say something that as liaison is to the Recreation Commission? It's a great appointment. Paul has put a ton of time in and happy to see him in this position. Sure he'll do a great job for the town. Town's lucky to have a person like Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joe, I just want to say that typically you won't see these as agenda items, but since it was my first appointment, you'll get a memo in the future that's filed with the board for the 10 days as per, the 15 days as per the charter. But since Paul was the first pancake, I thought...
Having kicked around enough?
We had an excellent applicant pool, and I think the town will be happy with its choice.
I'm sure we will. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all. Tricia, a vote to, just a little explanation on this, on the disbanding of the television grant committee and also maybe the following, appointing a cable television committee. If you could just touch on those things.
Sure. Previously, we discussed at Selectmen's meeting about the obsolescence, for lack of a better word, of the negotiating committee now that the cable contract is in place for another long period of time. So what we discussed sort of generally at that time was taking the two committees and merging them into one, but giving them a rather more directed charge as it relates to getting a cable studio up and going, developing programming, appropriate equipment with funds available from the cable studio subscriber fees that come to the town and other funds that the board would look at annually under the budget. So what these two items on your agenda do is disband the two former committees, merge them into one, and set the appointment process for some members and solicitation of new members.
Thank you. We've talked about this before, so this is, this is the result. So the motion to the board, our discussion, whatever pleases the board.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to disband the cable television grant committee and the cable television advisory committee, and further that the board thank the members of these committees for volunteering their time and expertise to the town of Situate.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's your answer. Again, this is the appointment of the new committee, as Tricia just explained.
Move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Monty Newman, Richard Long, Vincent Calicious, and Patricia Vincaze to the cable television committee.
Second.
Discussion.
Just one point. I was the selectman that was on the negotiating committee and the liaison to the other one. So I think it's probably a good idea for a selectman to be on this committee in a voting capacity. I don't know how, if we should change the motion to do that or not.
Or just appoint one of you now?
Yep, we can just include it and...
Or that could be one of the three. I'm not saying to replace one of these four people, but there's three people at large that can be on there.
Do we have a volunteer?
I think Anthony Vignani would be an excellent choice.
Second?
Well, unless one of you, like, we're to the point now where the committee, the financial part of it has kind of been figured out, and now they're really working on content and distribution and production. So if any of you guys have much more experience or interest in that than I do, you can...
All right.
That sounds, that sounds like...
I would be happy to do it unless...
Well, I mean, you did all the finest. I mean, I was it before you were, and you've done it for the last couple of years, so why don't we trade it back?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Murray has volunteered.
So should do a remote?
I'll tell you what, let's just make it clear. Why don't we just make a new motion? Would someone rescind the...
Sure, I rescind the motion that I just issued.
Second? Make the second, okay. All in favor rescinding the motion? Single, have you saying aye?
Aye.
Now, the new motion, including Mr. Murray.
A move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Monty Newman, Richard Long, Vincent Calicious, Patricia Vincaze, and Richard Murray to the cable television committee.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to all the new members.
Thank you. Put it on my resume right away.
Put it on your resume. General number 10, budget calendar timetable. As we were given last Saturday at a working meeting, all of Saturday morning, timetable, which was put together for the presentation of the budget. That will result in the budget being presented at the town meeting in May, but it starts now. And this would be a vote to accept that timetable that Tricia gave us then and is in front of us now. So, take a motion, and after there's any discussion, we'll discuss it.
Move that the board of selectmen vote the fiscal year 2011 budget calendar timetable as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
There's been a motion and seconded. Is there any discussion on the timetable?
I guess the question would be, I know the answer, but you've gone to the other committees, and they've all, advisory committee has seen this and agreed with it. One of the, one of the changes that occurred is that we kind of worked for years to do it, have the board of selectmen, excuse me, have the advisory do it before the board of selectmen, and now we're kind of reversing that back. As the town administrator said, that's the proper way for it to be done. But just to know that you guys are aware of that and support that. And then capital planning, I'm on that committee, and I know they're aware of this as well.
And then also, there's been one minor change. One of these committees, one of the, one of the boards has switched to a time from one month to the next, but overall this is fine.
Further discussion, Norman? You can have it right now. Right at, you know, you can have it now. Yes, it will be public. It is public, Norman. All right. A motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? General. Thank you. The next item, item number 11, is the vote to set the polls for the, for the state primary, the special election that will be held in December.
Move the board of selectmen vote to set the poll hours for the state primary from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on December 8, 2009 at the high school gymnasium.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to eight, that's going to be a long day. Wow.
Do we know when absentee ballots are going to be, do we know when absentee ballots are going to be ready?
No, I need to get one. I'll find out.
Next item is the always important town administrator report.
Thank you. It's getting a little longer. I hope that's not a bad sign. First item that you have is, I'm actually really pleased to tell the board about this since it's been sitting on reserve for a few weeks. What I've done, working with Tom Rose, is created an internet site for Town of Situate municipal employees as distinguished from an internet site. This is password and username protected, and what it allows me to do is instead of inundating department heads and staff with blast emails all the time, every employee can go onto the site and find out information, policies, directives, and other recent events or whatever that's coming up to get information out. And I did include a copy of the welcome and the homepage for you with the various attachments set up. Most notable is the fact that all of the budget instructions and materials are up on this internet site. So when we did the budget instructions, they went out to department heads November 5th. All of the forms and everything are downloadable to go into the, this internet site and work off of them. And employees are obviously encouraged to send information, or if the board has information they would like to get out to the town staff, boards and committees, this is a vehicle by which to do it. As I think we've talked before in general terms, the town has a number of technology challenges, so we're really ahead in terms of state of the art and having all this in electronic format. And folks will go into budget sense, the templates for the narrative, new narrative sections of the budget. As you received on Saturday, the budget process has changed considerably, and the vehicle through which folks access this is on the internet site. So just wanted to share that with you. And you have the code and password in the budget instructions that you got. So it's right on the front page. And that sort of segues into the second piece on the report, which is the new budget format. And not to get into too much detail, but it is decidedly different. I think we had a very long meeting that staff attended, department heads. We did two hours on goals and setting, and goals and objective setting, which will be a required inherent part of the budget now. The budget is going to be much more of a document and a roadmap that talks about the town and the services, programs, and activities that it provides. And obviously, you just approved the new timetable. And I'd like to pick up DiLorenzo and Eric and Joe, who attended a meeting to sort of go through all these dates and timelines. We have one of the earliest town meetings in the Commonwealth, and that presents some unique challenges. And also the fact that I'm new and getting a little late started in terms of the whole sequence of events. But I think the budget calendar gets us where we need to be. As Tony mentioned, there's been a change. The board will review all the budgets before they go to advisory. The schedule rolls, so somebody sees the board on a Tuesday, they immediately go Thursday night to the advisory committee. The board won't vote the budget this year as it's presented to them. They'll wait till they say all departmental budgets, and then vote them in total. And the calendar is designed to also allow the advisory committee and the capital planning committee to meet their charter and bylaw deadlines. And as I said, the department heads are doing well so far, and they've all been very cooperative and supportive. This is a new process for everybody. I expect it will have some kinks and bumps in the roads, but I think, I'm confident that the final product you get on December 15th for your meeting will, will be more information than you probably want to weed through. So that's all I have there. I'm happy to answer any questions. The next item is the financial trend monitoring. This is the fourth month, and as you can see, we're pretty much keeping steady to some revenue and expenditure trends that we've talked about in previous meetings. As I know, the fire department overtime is tracking and trending very high over FY09. But as I know in my narrative here and speaking with Chief Judge, we did have firefighters off on injured on duty. They're back to work. I expect you'll see a downward trend in the overtime for fire when you get the November report. Unemployment continues to increase each month. It was 29,000 for the month of October, which I don't think is reported here because we just got the bill earlier this week. But we did address that anticipated increase at the special town meeting in November 2nd. So I'm, I'm comfortable with, with where we're going in terms of expenditure to appropriation through... And again, happy to answer any questions on that.
A quick, a couple of quick points there. Transfer station is running about $33,000 above on the revenue side through October, which is very good. And Willes Walk is running a little bit below, about $10,000 or $15,000 below revenue through October. And all of them are pretty close. You know, the only dramatic one, like you said, was, was the overtime and the fire, which you've addressed. So they look like we're tracking the budget pretty closely.
The, the fourth and last item on the town administrative report is discussion, initial discussion with the board about an ESCO project. Since the Renewable Energy Committee did such a bang-up, smack-and-job on the wind turbine, we're ready to have them take over another project, which is an ESCO project. ESCO is an acronym for Energy Savings Contract. This is something you may have heard about since other communities are doing it now. I had some direct experience it when I was working with the city of Springfield. Essentially, what the scenario would play out here if we were to move forward was that a baseline audit of every town and municipal and school facility needed energy dictation for all items and any items related to energy. Roofs, windows, boilers, HEVAC systems, solar, thermal. And that baseline audit is conducted by a company that the town would select by competitive bid process. Once that contract was awarded to the company, the baseline audit would reveal if X a number of improvements were made in these facilities, the savings would be rechanneled into capital improvements to fund those identified efficiencies and savings. This would require town meeting approval. The town would essentially have to set aside the funds to do the baseline audit in the event that the audit was done and the company found that they could not get a return on their investment from, because our systems were efficient and state-of-the-art or whatever. I'm rather confident that would not be the case. However, I just want to make sure, you know, we go into this with our eyes open. I met at length with the Renewable Energy Committee about this last week, gave them sample RFPs from three communities. They have agreed to review them and draft an RFP for the town. They're, also, we'd have to gather a lot of data that we don't have in one place right now to include in the RFP so we could paint a picture of the town as far as electrical usage and things like that. The Renewable Energy Committee has volunteered to do those kinds of analysis for us. Once we're providing them a month's bill of electricity from all facilities, we have the towns, we expect the schools by the end of this week. The accounting office has done some good work, manually pulling all those bills out. So my timetable, obviously, is to have an article for town meeting. There are state funds available. This, this is where your stimulus money is for municipality, which I think we've all come to see is very limited at the local level. There are grants available for the baseline audit, but I chose not to pursue those because the bigger grant money is available once you go into actual capital improvement so we can really, I think, leverage those funds much, to a much greater degree, and do something sooner than later if we get grant funds and are successful. So again, you'll be hearing more about this, but I just wanted to share with the board and, and tell you that the Renewable Energy Committee endorsed the concept as well. That's all I have under the town administrator's report.
Thank you. All encompassing. Under other business, Sean, do you want to start off?
Yeah. I'd like to publicly thank, and I don't want to name names because I'm afraid I will miss somebody, the police officers and the firemen who literally saved a woman's life the other night. As I understand, the police officers did not wait for the fire department to come. They saw the need to get this person out, or consequences would have been disastrous. They went in the house, removed the person, and made a very good save. I'd just like to thank the men and women that were on duty, the police and fire, and like I said, Tricia, you might be able to name them. I, I don't know, for fear that I'll skip somebody. They knew who they are, and thank you. They do a great job every day, but this is above and beyond. That's all, Joe.
Thank you, John.
Joe, briefly, just the special bylaw review committee is going to be meeting again later this month, the end of the, actually, the beginning of December, and probably will be coming up promulgating proposed changes to the zoning bylaw, which will be circulated once it's been formalized. That special bylaw committee will disband, and the bylaw review committee has convened and will be in attendance. And then from there, it will be brought to the board of selectmen, to the advisory, and to everybody in preparation for the town meeting. So just to give a heads up, that's in the works. It's going forward, so we'll be giving some more information shortly. And that's it.
Thank you. Rick Murray?
Yeah, two quick things. I'd also just like to thank Tricia's office, as well as Gary Carla's office, for the, the nice wreaths and so on that were placed around town on November 11th on Veterans Day. That was nicely done, obviously on a very important holiday, and I just wanted to, to acknowledge that. Also, I wanted to bring to the board's attention, just a little thing from the, well, actually a pretty big thing from the Water Resources Committee. You may have seen some announcements from Jeff Rosen's group there, that the modeling study is nearing its conclusion, that they've been working with state agencies on and local agencies on in terms of tracking water flow throughout the various aquifers, reservoirs, wells, ponds, and so on. And so this has been about a two- or three-year endeavor, and it's come together very, very well. And probably sometime in January, Mr. Rosen and the Water Resources Committee might be coming before us to give us a sort of a bottom line what it is. But with this model, we're going to be able to do a much better prediction of, of water drawdown from our various resources, as well as water replenishment as a function of precipitation changes, and so on and so forth. It's going to be a very good tool for us all in the future. Just wanted to update everybody as to where that was coming.
Thank you very much. Tony?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. On a lighter note, youth football has come to an end this year, and I want to thank all the coaches and all of the participants for helping all the juniors there. I know of two teams in particular that went to the finals this past weekend. The fourth graders went out to Bridgewater and played their game. And by the way, they have a tremendous cheering staff. The cheerleaders are excellent. And they lost a tough game. And then the seventh graders played right here last Sunday afternoon, and they won, and they are the champions for their age bracket. So kudos to those two teams, and again, thanks for all those people that participated.
So what did they do on fourth and two?
They went for it. Why would you go for it? And the last one, just a, a quick update, we're getting to the holiday season, and Community Christmas is gearing up for a busy season. They help those families that have a financial burden over the financial, over the holiday season. And just a few quick things, they, they pretty much hold the Knights of Columbus full for the next several weeks. And some of their needs are for kids, baby diapers, board games, school supplies, toddler clothing, and those types of things. They do tremendous work. And you can drop it off at the Knights of Columbus every day between 12:00 and 3:00, or 7:00 and 9:00 in the evening. So anything that you can give to help these families is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Tony. Next item is correspondence. I don't believe we have any.
No, we don't.
We'll move on to the minutes.
Move the board of selectmen vote to accept the minutes from November 2, 2009.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion of the board. Any favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Finally, the adjournment.
Move the board of selectmen vote to adjourn the meeting at 8:29 p.m.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, folks.
And happy Thanksgiving. I don't think we'll be meeting before then, will we? No.
No.
Happy Thanksgiving to the town, from the board. And that is it. Thank you.
Say good night, folks.